Let me know when you're broadcast. Are you now live? All right.
Give me a second just to start up the Zoom.
Okay, buddy.
We are now live.
Thank you, Woby. Good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM March 29th, 2021 Board of Trustees Work Session. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There was discussion about going into executive session at the beginning of the meeting. I would suggest we take those motions one at a time. Victor?
I was gonna add the executive session, the Hampshire matter versus Village of Amerenek. The other is Village of Amerenek versus ABC.
Since different people can vote on different matters, let's do them one at a time. You want to make the Hampshire one?
Hampshire first, okay.
Okay. You making motion?
I make it moving.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Augustino call the roll.
Trustees Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
I'm recused.
Natchez?
Mr. Natchez, you're on mute.
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I don't believe this is an executive session subject, so I'm gonna vote no. Vic, do you want to make the motion or any next one?
Well, I just want to clarify that the motion was, it was, was current litigation in Amerenek, the Village of Amerenek case, so.
Yeah, I don't think the issue-
Do we need to read the, we need to read, what is it, the, what is the five, 105?
I think it's 1D.
1D.
D?
Okay.
Is that, is that your concern, Mayor, or not?
My concern is that the issues that were raised by the letter this weekend are not particular to the litigation, but they're particular to the representation.
Well, of course, when I moved the motion, I didn't say it was because of the letter. I just moved because of where we stand now, just to clarify, but, okay.
Okay.
Not done, not with that one.
Okay, next one?
So the next one under the same, under the same article.
105, 1D?
Is AB, the Village, the Village of Amerenek versus ABC Properties.
You making a motion? Is there a second?
I mean, I will second. I will say that this is-
Aren't you, pardon me, aren't you recused?
No, I'm recused from ABC versus VOM, not VOM versus ABC. That we had a discussion about that and I get it, I, I'm the one that raised the issue that we had to discuss this all at once and we were advised last week that there was no conflict.
I, I think that whether there's a conflict or not, it's, it's your determination, it's not whether you were advised on it.
Conflict involves more than the Board of Trustees, so.
Can I, can I just finish?
Yeah.
Because if, if the village were suing Hampshire, I would certainly feel that I would still be conflicted. I mean, there are, I, I think litigation that goes, you know, the village versus someone and someone versus the village, based on the same facts here. The ABC is based on the same underlying facts.
That's the specific point I raised last week and we got a different opinion from the village attorney, so I really don't know. I really don't know. I raise an issue that I feel the Board of Trustees should be addressing. I'm not sure I should be the one addressing it. I think the Board of Trustees has a responsibility to address something. I can withdraw my second.
I withdraw the motion and we'll discuss it. We'll bring it up again the next regular meeting in two weeks.
Okay, so motion withdrawn.
Alert has been submitted, so, so there's no, if the, if the other colleagues don't want to address it, that's fine, in two weeks we'll deal with it. If, if there's a second, if not, we will just stay, stay, stay there and see what happens. So with motion withdrawn.
Okay, I'll see you all in executive session to talk about Hampshire.
All right.
Well, so, you're done?
I'll call you, Tony.
Thank you.
Home phone?
You know what, I'm just gonna stay on this page.
Yeah, 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 there you go.
Yeah.
How do I do this?
Somewhere a place for us. Peace and quiet and open air wait for us out there.
Somewhere, somewhere we'll find a new way of living.
So are we back for a five-minute work session now?
Well, we're gonna go to an hour.
We're gonna, so we're gonna go an hour plus the attorney.
What do you guys wanna do? I mean, that-
I mean, I told, I told my family I was done at seven. I, I thought that's what we had arranged here.
That is what we had arranged here. It's five to, it's five to five.
It's five to six.
Five to six. So, all right, let, let's, let's go to 6:30 and then try and talk briefly about the attorney and talk about who we want in to.
All right.
All right, Nora, we're gonna go to five, 6:30. And so we're back to the, the regular Village of Marineric work session, an abbreviated one. We just came out of executive session. No votes were taken in executive session. Old Business 1A, 90-minute parking on West Boston Post Road. I'll be very brief on this. I'm very glad to see that back in the 90s, they removed parking in front of the condo, the Oriental Gardens condo. I think to be equitable, you have to go all the way down the block because what you have in that situation, you have the exact same you know, life situation, people living in apartments. In this situation, a lot of the people in those apartments are not as organized or as affluent as the people in the condo association. So I would like to just extend removing that 90-minute limit all the way down to 817 West Boston Post Road. I looked at the code and I drove around the village today, not today, this past weekend. And there are other places with 90 minutes, but they are in front of places that have commercial aspects to them, all the way down to 817. There are no commercial entities. And it's not really fair if we're gonna be doing it for, we've done it for Oriental Gardens. We should do it for everybody that lives on that strip down to 817.
Where is 817, Tom?
817 is, Dan, so you're going toward the Orient Avenue. It, it's about across the street from town center before you get to like the Boston Market and all of that. The next, the next place next to it that's commercial is, is that real estate place where they have the drive-in off of Boston Post Road.
If you recognize the building, Dan, this is 817.
Yeah.
Yes, and 817 has been commercial.
No, it's not.
It has been.
All right, it's not now.
It has, it has been up until about a year or two ago. And we've, we've changed the zoning to encourage commercial on there, on the ground floor, and that's what, that, that's what the zoning now says.
Okay, but it's not being, and it, you know, I, I'm trying to make this equitable for the people who live there who don't have the means or the time to come to Board of Trustees meetings or to organize. You know, it, I'm not gonna beat this dead horse. I'm asking this board to do this because it's the fair thing. If, if you don't wanna do it, I'm not gonna waste time here tonight. But it's the fair thing to do.
So I have a question, and the question is, when the, when the first, when the 90-minute parking was removed previously, it was done before the Traffic Commission. Why are we bypassing the Traffic Commission? Is that like, it's just, I'm just saying, it's not our normal process. Usually it goes to the Traffic Commission, and the Traffic Commission makes a recommendation. So we're bypassing-
Traffic Commission usually doesn't do parking restrictions.
Actually, they make recommendations pro and con.
Kelly might be able to speak to this because she's the liaison.
Well, I will say that back when, if, back in the earlier days of the Traffic Commission, we were much more concerned with getting people moving through the village. It was much more about, we don't want people to crash into the train track overpass. It, that's what we were doing. And, and I would say that since I've been on the Board of Trustees, the focus has really changed to a pedestrian and cycling safety commission. Like, it's really more about traffic safety than it is about moving traffic efficiently. So it's, it's, it's just, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different. I, I, I mean, we really, we, since I've been a liaison, we really aren't, we really don't talk about parking, except to the extent, you know, we add a stop sign which necessarily requires that parking spaces be removed, you know, or if parking, you know, we're, we remove parking places because of visibility issues. Like, that's, that's the focus at this point.
And is this the same kind of situation where in this area, the 90-minute parking had not been enforced? And now it's being enforced? Do we know?
No, I, I think it, it has, it has been enforced too. I think that they, they weren't enforcing in front of Oriental Gardens.
But they were enforcing in front of this strip. I'm just, I'm just-
Yes, and I think that that's not fair.
But, okay, so no one has asked that it be removed. I'm excited, you have asked, but-
I have asked because, and, but the, the people who live in those apartments are not gonna be coming to these meetings. We all know that.
I'm, I'm just trying to clear up the process. The other question I have is, if we were to make this change, I think it should be dependent on, to the point Dan raised, that we did change the zoning. So if that use switches to commercial at the ground floor, then it would be a different, it would be, it would, it would be a shorter-term parking because that would be something that the developer, developing a mixed-use property would want.
Yes, Dan.
My thought is that I would, I would like to hear what the Traffic Commission has to say, not just about that, but the opposite side of the street as well. Same area. Where, where cars just tend not to move off the majority of those that are there.
But that's not what they, that's not-
That's not what they do.
They do.
Excuse me. That's, you have cars that just stay there.
But what she's saying is that, that, that's not what the Traffic Commission does.
When I was liaison on the Traffic Commission, that is one of the things that they did do. And they did look at things that were forward planning as to, you know, what if, what if, what if? So that they, so that we had not just a reactive, but a, a planned thoughtful approach, you know, which is something that I think we really need to do, rather than just doing it piecemeal in one, you know, in one area or two areas. And I think that that would be very helpful in, you know, formulating. That's part of the charge of the Traffic Commission, whether they have been doing it a couple of years. Is-
All right, listen, we, we got till 6:30. Do you wanna do it this way or not? Just like, let me know. Come on. I, I don't even-
I just, I just told you what I thought, Tom.
Okay, so you don't wanna do it.
You know, Tom-
I mean, we have, Dan, we have 30 minutes. You've said your piece. I understand. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this?
You know, it, I, I think consistency is good. And this, I mean, when this first came up, I raised the issue of consistency then. I think that if we're going to treat Oriental Gardens this way, we should treat every other residential unit where we have, you know, 90-minute parking in front of those residential units. I think we should treat them the same. I understand there may be some debate about whether they were built before there were, you know, parking and garage requirements with the building or not. I'm happy to have that discussion. But I, I do think we should have consistency village-wide. I think, though, in the past, what we tend to do is expand the problem in such a way that we end up not addressing it. So I think a prime example is parking on Boston Post Road and the multi-space meters, and we forfeited that revenue for a year while we expanded, well, let's look at this block, let's look at this block, on and on. So what I, what my approach, what I would like to do is we've, that we do this piece in front of Oriental Gardens and in front of the strictly residential buildings on Boston Post Road, but continue this discussion to other buildings where there is 90-minute parking and to see if that's equitable in those cases. So I think, you know, rather than get bogged down in consistency village-wide, we should take what's before us tonight, treat that section of Boston Post Road equitably, and then continue the discussion. That's what I would propose.
I guess, I, I don't disagree, but my, but, but 853 Boston Post Road already doesn't have that restriction. That was removed by the traffic, that was removed by the Board of Trustees upon recommendation by the Traffic Commission. So I sort of feel we're not consistent in how we're changing parking. And I also am concerned that if, you know, if this moves back to a commercial space, then, then it has to be revisited because it's not in front of a residential unit. So I, I think if we're gonna adopt this new parking scheme for the stretch between 853 and, I'm not even-
953, 953.
953 and 817, then we would have to, you know, have a proviso that if it, if those buildings are redeveloped as a mixed-use commercial, it would no longer be a residential building. I mean, I think that's, that's what we're not being consistent about.
Well, that, that could be, that could be taken care of in site plan review.
But I think if we're gonna change the parking, we're changing it because it's residential. And then we've changed it.
Okay.
Just so you all know, there are numerous areas in this village that have streets with restricted parking that are in front of pure residential.
They're not 90-minute restricted. They're, they're mostly, you know, you have to move your car on Tuesday, you have to move your car on Wednesday.
No, if you take a look at-
I took a look.
You take a look at numerous streets. Avenue, like the, all the streets around there, going all the way up, you know, in all directions. That was done, I think, mainly to keep people from on the railroad, going to the railroad of parking on the residential streets. But it's still the same thing. You have numerous, you have numerous streets through this village where there is mostly residential or only residential with restrictions.
But tho, those restrictions-
That's what, that's what-
But those restrictions were put in at, at the request of the neighbors.
Tom.
And they got a special pass so that they could park there. Listen, i, i, is that free, is that free people who wanna move this to next week? Because we got a lot and very little time. And it, it's my matter, and I'm, I'm done chewing it over. I really am. Nora, do you wanna move it to next?
Well, I, what, well, first of all, I'm not sure what we're actually moving. We're removing-
From 817 to the end of nine-
I mean, we don't have, I, I mean, I know what we're moving. We don't have language to it. I would be comfortable doing it if we tie it to, that if those units become commercial, that the, because we're instituting this because it's residential property, that use reverts. And we don't, I mean, that we don't wait until the Planning Board figures this out in site plan. That's a directive.
Okay. Mr. Sonoff, could you produce a, a resolution to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. It's free to go on the next meeting. I appreciate it. Village foil policy. I think Jerry, you, you wanna wait for Jerry for this? Because I know he, this was kind of something he'd been working on. Dan, what do you think?
Oh, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Especially if we wanna finish by 6:30.
Yeah. Walking safety assessments. Did everybody have a chance to look at all of these?
Yes.
Many times, yeah.
Um, let me, let me just say, and I don't think this is the time to have a lengthy discussion of these, but you know, we've lost Shannon now, and she was really the driving force behind these. And I don't know how many more we're gonna have of these unless we decide to, you know, pay our consultant to do these. But there are a lot of good recommendations here. I think we can all agree. And some of them are low cost, some of them are high cost. But what I'm gonna propose in our budget discussions is that we talk about having some allocated amount of money that we can use on traffic safety in the village going forward, whether it's a capital expenditure, whether it's split between DPW and the Police Department, or somehow, but that somehow we allocate funds, this- or somehow, but that somehow we allocate funds this year and every year going forward, I would hope, to be spent on this type of work that's, that's done by these recommendations. Sometimes it's striping, and that can be a minor thing. Sometimes it's adding a curb or doing a further traffic study and doing a roundabout, or a pedestrian island in a busy intersection. Some of these things are very expensive. But unless we have some money to study them and to, and to do some minor things, I don't think any of them are going to go anywhere.
And it probably should be part of our capital budget plan.
I I I made that one of my recommendations for the capital budget. You know, just, I mean, I'll touch briefly because I went on all these walking assessments, but the one I know best is Fenimore and Prospect because I probably crossed that street thousands of times because I lived on Prospect, and I went to the train, and I went to the village, and I, and that is just, it it it's a bad street. I I I'm a grown man, and I used to jog across it. You know, when my kids were little, I always carried them across it, up up to the point where they were embarrassed being carried. But it it it's so hard to get across that street feeling safe. You can't see the cars that are coming up over the hill, and they're gunning it to come up over the hill. And it it's just, you know, a a bad street. And also, the old white, the old Post Road is also very bad. You know, we we did a walking assessment there. And it, I I live across the street from that now, and I see there's a ton of kids that use that to go back and forth to the high school in Hummings. So, again, these are, they might cost some money in the future, but these are really accidents waiting to happen. As a matter of fact, I, on Prospect, I'm sure that there's a lot of people who remember accidents. There was a bad one with a motorcycle one night in the summer when everybody was out on the street, and I'm sure everybody who lives over there still remembers it.
Mr. Mayor, if you want, I'll, I'll send an email after this meeting to save some time for everyone, just give me some commentary on some of these items.
Victor.
Maybe, maybe, maybe it's in the direction I'm to. I'm thinking, which is that, well, this, this, this is, this is really good work, amazing investment of time and 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 heads put together. We just need to take it to the next step, which is identifying which projects can be done this fiscal year or the next.
I agree.
But but tha- that, that is what we need to decide how to get there. But if we just, if we just leave it as we're going to allocate money and then see how, what's going to be done, I see us discussing this next year. So what would be the, we, we, we need, we, the key is, who, who's, who can do this? Would it be a next step? Would it be staff? Would it be us in another session? But we need to define that.
I I think, I think we need to get pricing on how much like the the bump outs on bump outs on Fenimore and Prospect would be, the pricing on how much the the changes to old Post Road would be.
Yeah.
You know, I think, because you got to have a discussion, right? You can't have it in a void. We need numbers.
So so on a policy matter, I think that safety include and priority mean would be for the school kids as well. There are some, some, some references there to 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 kids walking to school that that need, that would need essentially identify those really critical areas, as as the mayor has pointed out, and those relating to schools, I said, that I think stand out and 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 figure, identify how much and how it could be, could be moved. So as a matter of priorities, if that helps, I think those, that's where the two key priorities should be.
Okay, so as far as Fenimore and Prospect, Matt Carmody has prepared, prepared a conceptual plan with conceptual budget. So we have some generic idea what the cost of that can be, could be. I think we would need to hire an engineer for, to do a prepared detailed plan and, and bid documents. Regarding Old Post Road, that's a more complicated and expensive project, which is actually, you know, a service that's a good thing because we're looking to possibly apply under the Transportation Alternatives Program, called the TAP program. And typically, they like to fund projects that are several hundred thousand dollars, if not more.
But then, then let me ask you something. Could, could we get pricing without going through bid documents? Or like, can we just get a, an engineer to give us?
And that's. Yeah, I mean, so we, we haven't, we have a preliminary estimate for Fenimore Palmer. Sorry, Fenimore Prospect. I I don't have it in front of me. I can get that to the board. And I can certainly talk to Matt about putting together a budget to get a preliminary estimate on of what that project would cost for Old Post Road.
Ballpark.
Yeah.
And in some cases, there are like rough estimates in here. I know that the Oriente and Rushmore exchange is getting very bad. It's really horrible for school kids. And and we've had a lot of concern about, you know, between Boston Post Road and that Rushmore split, pedestrians and, you know, not having a great place to park or to cross the street, I'm sorry, to go to the harbor. And you know, there was a a ballpark estimate in the safety assessment of 15 to $20,000 to deal with that by putting a a traffic circle, a small circle there to slow everyone down. So in some cases, there are ballpark figures in these safety assessments.
Yeah. And, you know, we have been prioritizing at the school safety. You know, a couple of years ago, we submitted a CDBG grant for the first phase of the Merinick Avenue School District improvements by Merinick Avenue School, I'm sorry. And then CDBG is opening up again this year. I plan on talking to the board about that in the next month or so. And, you know, it's, it's right up the, right down the, the middle of the plate for the county with CDBG. It's a, it's in a load of moderate area, and it serves a load of moderate air population. So it it beats every qualification the county would like to meet. So, and they're, yeah.
Okay.
I can't guarantee it'll be funded, but.
If you, if you get it, if you can get us, get us those numbers before we meet on the capital plan, that would be very helpful, Dan.
And what's the TAP funding schedule?
Um, I I get to confirm that with Matt. I I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head. I will, I'll get the answer on that.
That's just really, that's almost always sidewalks and bike paths. I mean, that's, that's a really good funding source.
Again, right down, right down the middle of the plate.
Yeah.
School, it's, it's for school safety.
Okay. Let's move on. Thank you. D, follow-up village policies, actions addressing racial and all forms of discrimination. Victor, this one was yours, right?
Yes. The, the, the goal of this, of this policy was for us, as trustees and the village as a whole, to really engage in, in a, in a review of of our policies, our budgets, so that they're fair, inclusive around the village, that every decision that's made carries that, that avoiding discrimination and actually helping inclusivity. It was supposed to be a year-long work, but due to COVID, another, another, many other, the other matters that have kept us busy, the ti- the timeframes came and gone. So it's up to you, colleagues, if you want to either just drop this or pick it up again and 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 make it a year-long effort. It would require, it would require some, some work because it will happen only if we, if we, if we, if we commit to, to making sure that our budget, our comp plan, our policies all tackle this. And at some point, the goal was to reach out to the community to see what perceptions are and what improvements could then. It's a big undertaking, big undertaking.
I'm all for trying it.
Me too.
I I am too. I, I, I would feel remiss in not pointing out that I think the discussion we just had on Boston Post Road parking is an example of, you know, really trying to be more inclusive and helping people who, you know, who might, who might not have their voices always heard before this board.
Hearing, hearing that, that support for this policy, then I think we should then re, re-adopt it with, with some with a, well, extending it 12 months and 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 doing the review. Like, the review analysis would be this year. The engage process would be more or less next year or end of, after the fall. The report would be next year, essentially ending, ending by the end, by by May next year, something along those lines. Because otherwise, it's too rushed. Something like that.
So you're thinking May 2022?
Yeah, kind of, yeah, a year-long, a year-long process. And then, then we will divvy it up, so, and reissue the, the policy. Naturally, that rings a bell. I know we were rushing on time here, but I think at some point, we should name, number our policies and date them. Because, you know, it's so hard to keep track of our policies. I know Sally does an amazing job in keeping everything in her head. But but it's, it's too much. We should put some numbers to this. Has that ever been tried? So anyway, I think for the next policy we adopt, the clerk, crush, crusher's office has some ideas. I think we should start having name, numbers for for policies that we adopt and keeping it, keeping track of them in an orderly way.
The way the executive orders were numbered.
Yep, exactly.
You mean, all resolutions, Victor, number every resolution that you adopt?
For a policy, when we adopt a budget policy, it's a policy coming out of the board. So that we have an orderly. But if, if there are consensus, then, then let's, let's then, I'll.
Why, why don't we date our policies like we do? Why don't we, why don't we date our policies like we do our law, right? Like, uh, policy A, and, you know, like, you know, when you adopt the law, it's P L L C and and a date. Why don't we do like, you know, policy A, 2022, policy B, 20, you know what I'm trying to get at? So that there's, there's some coherence in when, what year that policy was adopted and in what order.
And we keep a, we keep it that. Okay, for this one in particular, then, then reissue it. We'll put some numbers and and circulate something very quickly, and it could be done in two minutes next time.
Famous last words. Let's not, let's not give us up. Okay, yeah, let, let's get a couple we can knock off. What do we do with the water quality commu- committee? Is, is that still going to function?
Jerry wanted to talk to us about that.
Yeah. And it needs to be repopulated.
Has it ever been populated?
Yes.
Yes, it has been. It used to be effective, then it waned. And you're, you're spending $10 million to try and solve a problem that have a committee that is focused on it.
They, they would have saved this $10 million?
It would have saved, I don't know that it would have saved us $10 million, but it would save us a heck of a lot of money if we'd been doing what we were supposed to be doing, yes.
Okay, I just wanted, I just, I, I, I'd form a minute for $10 million. Review of village code, fair for, right, that's more than five minutes. Parking fine collection strategies. Dan, you want to talk to us?
Yeah, I I provided a memo to the board about some strategies that are applicable to collect parking fines. I know Jerry said he did a program in New Jersey and wanted to talk to you about some of the specifics about that. You're generally, you know, some of the options are, you know, amnesty programs, giving people opportunity to come to court. Other op- options are, you know, forwarding some of these outstanding fines to collection agencies. I brought that up in the past with other bodies of elected officials in here and in my former life, and that usually is not something they really want to move forward with. And then
Dan, what, since you've studied this, what do you, i- if this was your decision, what is your recommendation of what I've do to follow?
I I think the amnesty program, the, the issue is, is that once you get to a certain number, a certain vintage of parking fines, we lose a lot of the, the tools. The most effective tool we have right now is that if someone has three or more unpaid parking tickets, they get reported as a scofflaw to New York State and their registration gets suspended. The problem is that follows the registration, it does not follow the owner of the vehicle. So someone gets a new vehicle, if it's a lease, then they give it back. You know, we, we tend to, we don't have that stick anymore. But like I said, Jerry did have a program that he wanted to talk to you about, so I, I, I don't know what it is, but I'd like to hear it as well, because you know, I've been thinking about parking and parking collection strategies for about 18 years now. And yeah, unfortunately, we don't have all the, the tools that would make this a lot easier.
Alrighty.
Just one more thing on that, Dan. The majority of the, the overwhelming majority are very old. Is that what I understand from reading your memo?
That's correct. There are a lot of the, I haven't shared the roster we get every month, but there'll, there'll be things that'll say not on file or owner not found, which means a lot of times, I don't want to go too in-depth, but if someone writes a manual ticket and, you know, someone interprets that zero as the letter O or that one as a seven or an I, that's what happens. And again, for if someone is no longer the registered owner of the vehicle, again, the, the, our stick is the registration gets suspended, but that doesn't always prevent someone from, you know, just to get a new car, have a new car.
Understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, in, in the interest of moving this along and trying to get out of here by 7 o'clock, there, there's nothing on that that's going to take four minutes. Everything, but we did at least make a little progress. We got things off the plate. Please, let's not add anything until we move things along. So that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Discussion of village attorney is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1015F of the New York State Public Officers Law to review the medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporations or matters leading to employment, employment, demotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, you know. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Augustino, call the roll.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Batches?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Bob and Mark, y- you guys don't have to come. I'll see you all in executive session. I'll see you all in executive session.
Well, I'm not going to feel bad about causing a stop at seven if Victor had to leave at 6:45.
Well, I've converted, I've, you know, consulted with Augie. We have nothing but time tonight.
You are, you are very lucky men.
Okay, that's all it's gonna be. Okay. Uh, we've come out of executive session. We did not take any votes that need to be reported or any votes at all. For that matter, I need a motion to end this work session. I know you want a second?
Second, I'll second. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.